I have seven o'clock.
He doesn't have it streaming yet.
Okay.
Sticker for details.
Called order the September first, 2022, meeting of the Planning Commission. First order of business is a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Luke, roll call, please.
Yes, Pearson.
Present.
Will then bring his absent Campbell.
Present.
Diara. Diara?
Yeah, yeah, you're present.
Yeah, sorry, Diara, here.
Zalarsky.
Here.
McCauley.
Present.
Thank you. Any comments on the approval of minutes, any changes or comments? If not, I look for a motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Planning Commission review, the new business, a public hearing of Zhang Wang and Mary Yang, conditional use permit for an accessory structure. Luke, I look for your report.
Oh, it is a public hearing, I don't know if you need to formally acknowledge that, or...
Not until we open it, I don't believe, but it will be a public hearing then.
Okay. Sorry, I'm still getting used to the procedures here as the new guy. So, the location of this request is 2147 Helena Road, if I can bring up the map here. Just for reference, here is 694, and this property is on the east side of Helena Road, south of its intersection with 22nd Street. So, it's located in the Sun Meadows six subdivision. And this is a code compliance situation in which we are working with the applicant to bring the property into compliance. And the purpose here is to enable an existing accessory structure to remain. And this accessory structure, which is a shed, it exceeds the amount of, or the maximum amount for square footage that's allowed per zoning code. And the structure was just recently placed on the property. So, here's a closer look at the property, again, on the east side of Helena Road. The property is zoned as Oak Meadows PUD, you'll hear that acronym quite a bit tonight, planned unit development, where accessory structures, the size requirements are the same as the R4 zoning district. The structure is located in the rear yard, and I believe it's located along the southern lot line there. The next image here shows the structure, again, it's a shed. The square footage is 240 square feet, whereas the maximum size allowed per code is 120 square feet. So, double the size. So, in reviewing this request, staff finds that it does meet the, both the general and the specific review criteria for a conditional use permit, as noted in the staff report on file. So, in summary here, the use should not negatively affect surrounding property or impact infrastructure or environmental features. The property will continue to be adequately serviced by public services. The structure's design and use, and that is for storage of, you know, everyday residential uses, toys, lawn care equipment, that appears to be appropriate for the property and the area. I would like to note that the applicant obtained signatures from some of the neighbors that, who are located within 100 feet of this property, and there were no objections noted in that signature page. And staff recommends approval of this request, subject to two conditions. The first one is that the accessory structure shall meet setback requirements. That should be pretty easy to do here, this is, you know, a movable structure, doesn't have a permanent foundation, it would just have to be moved to meet that five-foot sideyard setback requirement. And then, the second condition is that the applicant would need to obtain a building permit for the accessory structure. I believe the applicant is here in attendance, but otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from the commissioners? No. If not, I'll open the public hearing. So, anyone who wishes to speak to this matter, if they come to the podium and speak. Offer it once again, anyone who wishes to speak to this matter, they would want to come to the podium. And in the third time, just to be sure, anyone wishing to speak, come forward. Seeing none, I close the, I close the public hearing, bring it back to the commissioners. Again, any comments from, anyone about the, this issue?
So, when we do this motion, it will have those, the five-foot setback with that condition on here? It's not in our motion in the packet, it doesn't say that on our motion, but that will be included into that, correct?
Right, as part of your recommendation, those conditions are in the draft resolution that we have prepared, and when, when that resolution gets brought to the city council, it would capture those conditions.
Okay, I look for a motion to recommend approval of the conditional use permit for a 240-square-foot accessory structure at 2147 Helena Road North with the two criteria as mentioned. I have a motion.
I will make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And we are on to the second one, the public hearing for Jeffrey Charn, variance for an accessory structure. Luke, I look for your report.
Thank you. And the location of this site here, again, just for reference, is 694, so it's west of the interstate. And the location, the address is 3387 Hallmark Avenue, so it's on the east side of Hallmark, south of its intersection with Upper 39th Street, and it's located within the Sun Meadows second addition subdivision. So, this is another situation, it's a code compliance issue, where we're working with the property owner to bring the use into compliance. And in this case, it's to allow for an existing accessory structure, which is a deck for this property, to remain in its current configuration, which encroaches into the required five-foot setback from the side lot line. And I guess, some folks might be wondering about the administrative variance option here. This one just, it does not qualify for the administrative review and approval process, so that's why it's going through Planning Commission and then City Council as well. Here's a closer look at the property, again, east side of Hallmark Avenue. You can see in this picture, it might be a little bit difficult to see, but the deck is on the north side of the house, near the northern lot line. So, the property is zoned, PUD, Sun Meadow PUD, and it, this has the same setback requirements as the R4 zoning district. A bit of a side note, but I think it's worth noting that the PUD was designed for high-density residential development, and that includes the single-family dwellings that are in this neighborhood. So, single-family homes can be as close as three feet from the side lot lines when certain conditions have been met. So, the accessory structure, again, is a deck, it's located two feet away from this northern lot line. More information here, whoops. So, here's an actual photo of the deck on this property, as you can see, the lot line is marked out with the stakes there. So, again, two feet away from the lot line, and the requirement is five feet. After reviewing the review criteria for this request, staff finds that it meets the ordinance criteria for a variance, as noted in the staff report. And to summarize those points, the request does not conflict with the goals of the city's comprehensive plan. The accessory structure is for an allowed use, a deck. The unique characteristics of this property includes the high-density residential nature of it, and also that this structure has been in place since 1987. The deck was also updated back in 2019, the city just doesn't have the records on file for those requests. And the use should not alter the character of the locality, as, again, this is a high-density, single-family neighborhood. I would like to note that the applicant provided a list of signatures for property owners within 100 feet of the site, and there were no objections on that, that page with the signatures. However, I did speak to one neighbor on the phone who was in opposition to this request. And also, I forwarded the commission a little bit earlier today, a letter of support for this request from another neighbor. So, staff recommends approval of this request, subject to the following condition, and this, this is a little bit different than what you saw in the draft staff report, the draft resolution, it's just the one condition, and this was based on the city attorney's guidance. And the only condition is that the applicant obtain a building permit for the accessory structure. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, I did have a couple of questions. One was, in reading the descriptions, this sounded a lot, and I brought, that's why I brought up the question about administrative variance. Sounded like this may have been handled as an administrative variance. Now, granted, it was 35 years ago. Question is, how were the, were, how are or were administrative variances recorded? And is that how you might not have been able to find it?
So, I guess I can answer that, no, they weren't recorded, because I checked the county recorder's office, there's no record on file. In terms of how we handle it nowadays, it's all digital, I didn't find any variances, there's no building permits, we have pretty robust system nowadays to hand, or to compile or, and curate the building permits, but we don't have anything even from the 2019 request. We simply don't have any records for the structure.
This structure has been here as, essentially as is, except for the reconstruction, but for 35 years.
Yep, that says the applicant reports, that's correct.
Anyone else have any questions?
No question. I'm not sure how your current zoning code, when did it sort of, when did it start? So, what I would, just where I'm going with this is that if the structure's been here for 35 years, and your zoning code may not be here that long, maybe it is, wouldn't be a situation where it could be looked at as sort of a grandfathered-in structure?
I don't believe so, not in this case, because we did look at the PUD, the zoning that was in place, and that indicated that it was R4 zoning, is kind of like the underlying zoning that was in place, so it still would have had a five-foot setback requirement, even back in 1987.
Is 1987 the start of your current zoning code?
I'm sorry?
Is 1987 the start of your current zoning code?
Oh, the start of this current zoning code, no. That, the current zoning code, or, it was originally adopted, I want to say, back in the 70s, I could be wrong, but it predates when this house was built, for sure.
Okay, all right, that's good, thank you.
I have a question too. Now, this house was built in the 80s, brand new, and these people actually owned this house in the 80s, and so, they put this deck on, and it was, it had been, according to their records, is, they can't prove it, because they don't have the paperwork with them, but they did have somebody to come out. So, and it was a five-back, five-foot setback, except the actual deck, as it reads, is over, and that's why it's a two-foot now, because the actual footings are at five-foot, correct?
The actual footings, I do have another photo here of...
It's in the letter.
Oh, it is, oh, okay, I'm sorry. So, yeah, and that appears to be consistent with just the image here.
Okay, so, fast forward up to the 90s, when he put the new decking on it, and he called and asked, and they said, no, since everything is, is the way it is, you don't need anything, you're rebuilding, you're not necessarily changing any of the structure. So, I just don't think, I, I'm kind of confused why it's even here, you know, because it's, it really seems like you're making these people really jump through some hoops for why, I guess, you know? Did somebody complain, is it, is it...
This, this does originate as a code compliance issue, so someone did make a call to the city, and they complained about the situation here, the structure. So, in, yeah, in this situation, we have to bring them up to current code requirements, and, you know, first, first step here is to obtain a variance for, for the use. You know, basing a decision on a phone call back in the 90s, and different interpretations on, you know, who the, maybe the folks, you know, making the judgment call back then, that's a little difficult to, you know, rely on, so in this case, we're just working with, you know, our current zone, or zoning code, and just bringing it up to compliance, up to our current standards.
I have a couple of questions. So, I had a question, now it's gone. This is, oh, it's less about the deck and more about the building department. I guess I'm curious how we allow somebody to tear down an entire deck and rebuild it with no building permit, but if it was brand-new, you'd have to go build, get a permit. So, that just seems odd and concerning to me if I...
No, Chris, you do have to get, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you do have to get a permit for a rebuild.
That's, that's my point, that is my, that's my point, though, is how can, if, if four years ago, three years ago, someone had contacted the building department, how were they told, no, you don't need a permit, you can just tear the thing down? So, I think that's something that, that needs to be addressed.
That was for, for a reconstruction, not the original construction.
No, it says, that's why there's no building permit. When he rebuilt in 2019, he called the city and said, do I need a permit? And they said, they said, you don't need it, which makes no sense to me. If you're taking the whole thing down to the, the foundation, it's a new deck, essentially, you should, you should need a permit, so that's, I just have a concern there. My other, my other piece is, item four here, the plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner. I would disagree that this is, you know, something that's not created by the landowner, it's, well, it wasn't intentional, there's nothing inherent about this property that they couldn't have built a deck to a five-foot setback. It was a mistake on their part. So, I disagree that, that that finding has been met. That said, I think this is, this is a reasonable ask for a variance, and I would support it. So, that's all I have.
Any other questions? I'll open the public hearing. So, anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward to speak to this matter, please come forward. Please state your name and...
Name is Jeff Charn, I'm the property owner, I'm here with my wife Cindy in the back row. We're longtime residents of the city of Oakdale, house was built in 87, we've lived there ever since. We take a lot of pride in our property and keep it very, very well-maintained. Deck, I built the deck in 87, replaced it, the exact same location, size, in 19. Deck lies about two and a half feet from the property line. We're seeking a variance on the side setback requirement to allow the deck to remain in place. The planning, we're seeking the variance, the planning commission report, because I saw that, that the staff prepared is well-done, well-summarized, and appreciate the work they did on that. And there were the two requirements, that we pay for the permit and get an easement agreement with it, which we're both fine with, to bring us into compliance. I've always thought we were in compliance. I'm happy to take any questions, but when I, when I, when I talked to Luke and some at the city, they had told me that, when I called in to check my permit, because I did get a permit for it, and I did get a variance for it, back 35 years ago. And they told me that they don't keep the permits back that far. He said, we do keep permits going back to 72, and I said, well, there was a, the, we do keep the variance going back to 72, but I said, well, there is a variance with it, because per the site map that I think you were trying to show them up there, which was see in the packet he had, the footings are within the five-foot side setback. And the only reason they could have been approved if I had gotten a permit for them. And I came home from work, once the footing holes were dug, this was 35 years ago, I came home from work, the city showed up, they looked in the hole, they measured the, from the property line, they measured to the house, and it weren't there two minutes. And they were leaving, and I said, can I pour concrete? And he said, yes, you can. It's the last I heard of it. So, I poured the concrete, put the deck up, and it's been there for 35 years, and I wanted to replace it with a brand-new deck with the timber tech and all that. I did that, I called the city, I said, do we, and I referenced it in, as you said, in, in my two-page comment page on it, I did reference that we, I did call, and I said, you know, I'm gonna put up a new deck, gonna put timber tech on, do I need another permit? And they said, are you changing the footings? And I said, no, I'm not. And they said, are you changing the height, width, or length? So, it's all gonna be exactly the same. They said, well, no, you don't need another one. Okay, last I heard of it. Till this last month, when all of a sudden, they said, you don't have a permit. Okay, so how do I come, become compliant? They said, well, gotta go through the planning, me, then go through the city council, I said, fine. Do you have any questions on that?
Any questions for the applicant?
To me, it's more like a comment, that if the city allowed you to do that, you should have been able to do that by right, because that's already been there, you're not changing anything.
Right.
That's my opinion.
Thanks.
That too is my opinion too. So, I agree in the, in the motion to approve these things, but I just, I feel bad that he has to go through this in order to get this done, because it is kind of a bad situation that, that every, it's making him pay for a lot of things that is not necessarily of his own fault, and I just kind of don't think that's quite right, but that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to come forward?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, there was a lot to look at there, but I'm a little nervous as I don't do this, so I may stumble, so I apologize in advance.
You state your name for the...
I will. We want to thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight, my name is Sandy Flanagan, my husband, Tim, and I oppose the deck variance requested by the Charns. We live adjacent to the property that they are encroaching on, and let me explain how we got here today. Due to negative comments and actions by Jeffrey Charn, we decided, we wanted to put a fence up along the property line to alleviate the harassment we have been receiving from the Charns. The continued harassment has been ongoing, but escalated this year, May of 2022. We have several large trees lining our yard, and one of the complaints the Charns have is our branches and our leaves falling from those trees. We decided to have our trees professionally trimmed for the second time in April of this year, trying to be good neighbors. Due to Mr. Charn's many complaints, we turned to the city of Oakdale to find out what the legal process was of installing a fence. During this time, Jolene Burble, a city building inspector, provided us with an aerial view of our property. Based on what she told us, it looks like the Charns' fence is over our property line, and that the deck was possibly violating the setback ordinance based on what she could see from the aerial view. We borrowed the equipment to find the pins to locate the property line, but we had a lot of difficulty doing so, so we did hire a licensed surveyor, so there would be no questions upon placement of our new fence. During this process, we discovered that Mr. Charn's fence is over our property line, and that his deck was not built within the city ordinance. We have had several fence contractors come to our home and give us fence estimates over the last few months. During this process, all the contractors told us their deck should not have been built that close to our property line. They also stated they have seen fences moved for less than what the Charns' fence is over our property line. During this time, we contacted the city of Oakdale, I spoke with Jolene again in early June, and she verbally confirmed that the city ordinance is a five-foot setback from the property line for a deck. She let me know that a permit was never pulled, or was never inspected for the Charn original deck, or when his new deck he rebuilt in 2019. She stated this would not qualify to be grandfathered in. Do you mind if I get a sip of water?
That'll give us a second to read this. Luke, while she's doing that, is there anything that precludes us from kind of taking this in and using this as information, because it wasn't provided to you in advance?
That's exactly what this time is for, you know, to supplement the, the public comments from, you know, that you're hearing verbally, but yeah, this is all data to help inform your decision.
Perfect, thank you.
And I spoke with Luke twice, he didn't say to bring anything in prior, so, I'm not sure. My husband spoke with Ken, the city code enforcement officer, and he also stated the required five-foot setback from our property line. I also followed up with the email to Jolene on June 23rd, and she stated the issue is being looked into within the department, and then followed up that it was an open investigation of the property, and she couldn't discuss it further. As we were waiting for the city to follow up, we hired a real estate attorney who sent a letter to the Charns explaining their encroachment, and asking them to relocate the placement of the deck and fence to be in compliance with the city ordinance requirements. We did receive a letter back from their lawyers, you can see from the letter, there are some false claims, and we have highlighted the areas that are incorrect, or especially the part stating Jeffrey Charn had the inspector on-site twice for the approval. When he replaced the deck in 2019, he did not get a permit, he did not have it inspected, which he stated the city advised him it was not needed. According to Ken, that conversation never happened. Our neighbor, who is a civil engineer designer, stated he thought he made it bigger than the original deck by extending the overhang. My husband requested a meeting with Ken early in July to try and give the whole story. While Ken, my husband, and another city official met, Tim showed them proof of violations of, that the Charns were doing, that they were filing complaints about us, they were doing the same thing. Ken stated that Charns have called the city over 50 times to his office complaining about us or requesting information, as if he was looking for anything to be confrontational about. Ken stated that Charns have not complained about any other neighbors. In a letter back from the Charns' attorney, he stated that our trees are over on his property, and the picture he provided is showing the other neighbor's trees overhanging his property, not ours. He added that our sprinkler system sprayed as air conditioner and deck, and he called and had the community officer come out and speak with us. We do not have a sprinkler system. That particular day, we had high winds, which is something out of our control. It's just another example of them harassing us. Also, we were unaware that he is continually videotaping us when we were in our backyard, not with one camera, but two, which are located down the property line on his deck. This is extremely violating. When our new fence is installed, we have concerns about it being damaged with his deck being that close to it. Another concern is, normally in the winter, the Charns let their dog urinate and defecate on their deck, they shoveled the snow from his deck, which lands on our property. In conclusion, we have obtained several signatures from our neighbors within the 100 to 500 feet of the property, who also object to the variance request. Some neighbors did not sign our petition, as they were concerned that the Charns would retaliate against them. As a 30-year taxpayer of the city of Oakdale, we are asking for you to do the right thing, and please hold them accountable for their illegal placement of their deck and their fence. We, as citizens of Oakdale, the Oakdale community, are required to follow the rules, regulations, and ordinances of the city, and you can't enforce some people to follow rules and others to not. You may deliberate the cost to the Charns in remediation of righting their wrong, and having to remove all or part of their illegal deck, but please also consider the substantial cost to us as well, for the licensed land surveyor, the attorney fees, and now we are putting in that new fence. We want you to please vote no to the variance request. Respectfully, the Flanaggans.
Thank you. May I ask a couple of questions of you?
Sure.
Sure.
Apologize. How long have you lived at the residence? If you can come back up to the podium, please.
I'm gonna say 30...
1991 is when we moved.
1991.
I can't math that well. It's like 29 years, 31 years, something like that?
Over 30.
So presumably, and did you build?
No, we purchased it from someone.
Okay. So presumably, from the information that we have, because no one can prove if the deck was enlarged, so assuming it was the same size, the deck has been there for the entire 31 years that you've lived there.
Except, we believe that in 2019, he made the overhang bigger.
Understood.
Yes, but otherwise, the deck has been there.
Okay. And so, the only reason that it's an issue now is because of the tit-for-tat that's kind of going on between the neighbors.
And we're gonna put up that privacy fence to avoid anything, and we just don't want it that close to their property, we think it's way too close. And it's also about just holding people accountable, and doing the right thing.
Understood.
Mm-hmm.
And do you have any plans to take down the fence that's on your property?
We don't have a fence on our property, we're gonna install one.
If their fence is on your property...
Um, we don't...
I'm not an attorney, but I believe that's your right to take it down.
Um, we don't have plans to pursue that right now, we are just hoping that the deck will just be part of it removed, or whatever to come in compliance. So at this point, we're not, we're not planning on doing anything about the fence.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for right now, I wanna...
Does anyone else have any?
Anyone else?
Is there an aerial of this house in 2019?
I think that's aerial, if it can be brought back up on the screen. This is gonna be pretty recent, it's still a little grainy, it's not the best photo.
Can you get an aerial from 2019?
I, you know, I don't know, I can pull up the county's website, but I don't know when exactly those aerials were flown. It doesn't give me a timestamp there.
That's probably pretty recent. Sure, but I'm just saying, can you go back to, do they have records of 2019, an aerial of that area?
Possibly, I don't know off the top of my head, you know?
Maybe that would be something to look at, and see if there is a difference from 2019, and then of the new deck versus the old deck of 20, of the smaller, the one they're saying is smaller, because they're saying that he went bigger.
I would say with aerial photos, there's a lot of distortion, something called parallax, so you can have distortion up to, you know, several feet in some cases, so...
I would argue, though, that it's not our job to try and seek that out, it's either the applicant, or the...
I understand that, but it's such a mess here, I just thought maybe it would help clarify it a little bit, and you're right, exactly, this is way beyond our scope, we're just here to, but...
But the easiest way to quantify that is, the permits. If you would have gotten legal permits, we could tell you, decide, I understand that, but again, if he did things the way he was supposed to, the way the city wants it done, he would have that information, he does not.
I, I understand that, but I respectfully disagree with you. I don't doubt that he tried to call the city, and that the city possibly said, yeah, if you take it down, it's, and rebuild it exactly as is, that that's fine.
But the city said that conversation never happened.
And it's a he-said, she-said thing.
In their memory.
So you're saying you're...
Well, we just, that's what Ken told Tim, so we're just, we were believing what Ken said.
Right.
There's no recorded information, so we can't...
He did have a witness, there was two people there when Ken, when Ken spoke about it.
I have a couple of questions. Have you at any time sort of felt that, oh geez, this deck is not in compliance, they need to bring it in compliance, have you ever done that?
No.
We've noticed, though, it's close when we cut the grass to our property line, so we've noticed it in years and years, yes.
And then when he throws the contaminated snow over his deck.
Right, and when that happened, and you noticed it, have you ever called the city to file a complaint?
Yes, Ken.
Okay, and what was the outcome?
Ken didn't offer anything. He said it's snow.
The city inspected it, did they find him in violation? Have you filed a complaint with the city?
Did I file a complaint? Yes.
What was the outcome of the complaint?
It was no, no outcome. There was no outcome.
So it was ignored?
It was basically ignored, because it was snow. Kind of like raining on a deck or an air conditioner.
Okay, thank you.
We're just saying that, you know, it should be, it should have been built, his posts are five-foot, the variance, that the deck shouldn't be past the five feet, and that's all we're asking. You know, we don't expect them to remove the whole deck, but we would like it brought in compliance. Now, because of issues, we are putting up our privacy fence, and we would just like it farther from their deck.
And the other question is, has anybody seen this deck, and has anybody approved it? Is he in compliance? We don't know. So...
And that is one of the conditions of approval, is that he obtains a building permit, which means that they would inspect that.
Yeah, I'm going to, if there's, if you really have another, another comment, you can come forward, otherwise, I think I'm gonna close the public hearing, barring that.
He does have a comment.
Do you want to come up? Okay.
There were many things brought up in that discussion, which are a little bit off-track from what the purpose is today. First of all, the deck has never changed in its size. I have pictures of the deck where I've got 17 planks going out, or eight, excuse me, 19 planks going out on my old deck, I have deck, I have 19 planks going out on my new deck. And also the pictures that you show, if you could bring those pictures up, that showed the front, that one right there, you see the, you see the ballast on the deck? Those are metal. Each of those came specially ordered in pieces for the old deck, and I replaced them onto the new deck, which meant the posts up, holding up the entire decking on the top, the railing, the posts all had to be the same as on the previous deck, those are metal, you can't stretch them. The deck never changed in size. And as I said, the relationship with me and the Flanagans has deteriorated for years, and now they're opposing this, and they're opposing my fence. My fence has been on my property for 35 years. When they moved in, because it's a new development, when they moved in, they moved in after my house was up, after my deck was up, after my fence was up, but they're the ones who planted their trees, there were no trees on the properties. Everything was wide open, you could see everything. And so, there's never been a complaint on my property for 35 years. And I guess I ask that the objection be seen as a personal issue towards me, and not actually related to the merit of getting a variance. And I would, I would hope that it wouldn't be given any weight in this matter. So that, that's, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question. So the railings that we're seeing in this picture are the exact same railings that were used on the old deck?
Correct, 100%.
Nothing changed. So all you changed was the decking itself?
Correct.
Not the joists?
All, well, yeah, the structure of the deck has changed, but I'm, they're saying it got bigger, it overhangs more, it doesn't.
Okay.
And as far as putting the, the dog stuff onto their property, I have two and a half feet on the other side of my deck, it's shoveled off the deck onto that side.
So when you took out the new deck, you went down to the existing footings and started from that point up?
Correct. The footings are the same footings that have been in place for 35 years.
Okay.
The deck is exactly the same height, length, and width.
Okay.
And it's, and it's never been an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could ask you to limit it to 30 seconds, please, please come forward.
I don't know if the word "footings" is for the posts, okay.
The concrete and the...
Okay, I'm like, because I know that the posts, I know. Yes, we, our relationship has deteriorated, that's for sure, and had he not been calling the city all these times about us, and us getting a letter, and have the community officer come out, none of this would have happened. But because he's been harassing us time after time after time, that is why we pursued the fence, which we found out then where the lot line was, and how he had not been in the correct setback. So I think they started it all, it just kind of all snowballed, and we just want to correct it, because we are now putting up that privacy fence. So, I mean, we just think people need to do the right thing, they need to be accountable. When he originally put that deck up, he should have known what the setback was, five feet, and he shouldn't have extended it.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm gonna close the public hearing at this point, I think both sides have had ample time to air their questions. Collins, one thing that came out, Luke, in this, the only thing that I think is of importance to us, is there was a claim of the fence is over the property line. Have you done any research on that?
You know, that's a completely separate issue, we're only here to discuss the merits of the actual deck, the accessory structure. Legally, we can't even, you know, act on it, decide on it, so, separate issue.
So that's, but at this point, there's no real knowledge on that, from the city's viewpoint?
I have no knowledge of it, that's the first time I've heard of the issue.
Any comments from the commissioners?
I have a comment here. I am just gonna say that I do empathize with all of you guys. I worked for City of Saint Paul for 20 years, I handled zoning complaints, and I see that sort of happening all the time. As much as I empathize with that, the role of this board is not to sort of punish somebody for violation, that's not our purview. Our purview is to look at the merit of the variance, based on the findings, and make a recommendation. So I just apologize for offending anybody, but this is what I believe.
I would, I would add to that, Yaya, I think this, for almost 30 years, was an acceptable condition, and, well, I do sympathize with you, and it's unfortunate that neighbors devolves to this. If that element of this was taken away, there would be no question on this dais that, yes, this would be approved, because it was, regardless of what happened to the city, I don't believe that the applicant intended to violate the law. And this is about trying to kind of get them in compliance, it's a reasonable request, in my opinion. And as Yaya said, it's not, or Commissioner Diata, rather, it's not about penalizing the applicant. So at this point, I mean, my, when we vote, I will vote to approve this.
I guess I have one comment, too, is, like you say, this is something that we, we're just looking for the solution, and it's a reasonable solution for it, but they have to get a permit, and they will be inspected at that point, so the city will take actions at that point, that venue will take care of that. So if there is an issue otherwise, I think, as far as the legal part of it, on the, over the fence being over, they will take care of that portion of it, at the time that he has to get the permit, because that venue will take care of that. Right here, today, all we're trying to do is to get it all in compliance, so all this motion can happen, so they can actually have the permit, and the city actually come out and inspect.
One, one comment on that, as per the discussion with Luke earlier that I had, the permit and what we're talking about here does not include the, any discussion on the fence being over on their property, that's a separate issue that has to come up before us at a different time, or before the city.
Will come up for us?
Nope, not until, unless it comes through him.
I don't, I don't know that it will actually even come up before us, it seems like it's a civil matter that, that they would need to address, because whether something's on someone else's property or not, is not up for us to decide, that's either a matter for the court, or an attorney that tells, tells them, you can take it down, because it's on your property. You know, it's just like trees, if a tree overhangs your property, you can whack it right down, not the whole tree, but the portion that overhangs your property, so...
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I look for a motion, then, to recommend approval of a three-foot variance to allow the existing deck to remain at 3887 Hallmark Avenue North, with a side yard setback along the north lot line, with the caveats as described by Luke earlier.
So moved.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much. Hopefully you guys can resolve your issues, but that's kind of out of our purview, I'm Okay, next piece is a public hearing on the AV Development LLC, Oakdale Marketplace Apartments, PUD Amendment, Preliminary and Final Plat, and Site Plan. Luke, I look forward to your report.
Thank you. So this location is kind of southeast of the intersection of 694 and 34th Street, it's in the Oakdale Marketplace, planned unit development, some notable landmarks here on the screen, Target, Speedway, Autozone, so this property is just south of the Speedway and the Autozone, so it's on the, the west side of Marketplace, and just north of 32nd Street. So this is a vacant parcel, as you can see, it's about four and a half acres, and this request, it's really four parts, it's to change the, an amendment to the zoning, so a PUD amendment, preliminary and final plat, and also a site plan. A bit of background on this area, it was rezoned from industrial to the Oakdale Marketplace, PUD, back in 2004, to enable commercial uses, so the majority of the uses in this PUD are commercial, with one exception, that's the existing industrial site that's used for storage, and there are also some other vacant parcels in this area as well. Here's a high-level overview of this property, and the property in question is outlined in blue. Again, just for reference, here's 34th Street, also called Highway 14, County Highway 14. So as you can see, there are three accesses to the site, so one would be shared with the Speedway and Autozone property, so it would straddle the site, and then two accesses off 32nd Street, so one access would, would lead directly into this new apartment building for underground parking, and then the other access, a little bit further west, would be for the surface parking. I think I got a little ahead of myself, so this request is for an apartment building, 155 units, market rate apartment building, and it would be four, four stories. So with this overall site plan that's being shown right now, this is really for conceptual purposes only, what it shows is that the developer is thinking kind of big picture, you know, not just the site, but how does it integrate into the rest of the neighborhood. The applicant does note that there is an operation and easement agreement between Target Corporation and Oakdale Marketplace LLC for Oakdale Marketplace Shopping Center, and this agreement addresses ingress, egress, parking to each of the lots within the planned unit development, as well as sharing of utilities, and there are some existing shared utilities on the northern portion of this site, so water lines, and also the shared drive, like I mentioned. Here is a look at the site plan, if you would note that there are some exterior amenities being proposed with this development, so there's a courtyard here on the south side of the building, and to the west of the parking lot, the surface parking lot, is a dog run area, and also a tot lot. The applicant is also proposing new sidewalks, so along Marketplace, and also along 32nd Street. There is a good portion of this property that's essentially unbuildable, on the western part, there are easements for a pipeline, and also drainage and utilities, very difficult to encroach into those easements, very limited encroachments are allowed, so overall, you know, the applicant has, you know, maximized the use of this area. So in reviewing the technical requirements of the code, staff does believe, believe that most of those technical requirements have been met. Staff does not have concerns about traffic impacts, proposed building materials and design lighting, and also the signage proposed. There are a handful of deviations from the PUD and site plan requirements that the applicant is requesting, and I'll go through those. The setbacks, the required front yard setbacks along Marketplace and 32nd Street, is the building height, which is 46 feet 10 inches, and the proposed setbacks along those two fronts are 30 feet. The density requirement is maxed out at 30 units per acre, and the proposed density here is... here is 35 units per acre. The height max, maximum allowed is 40 feet, and the applicant is proposing 46 feet 10 inches, and then the parking requirement, 376 spaces, and the applicant is proposing 250 spaces, and that includes both the surface parking and also the underground parking. Landscaping, there is a deviation there as well. For the Boulevard along Marketplace, 20 trees are required, and the proposed number of trees there is 15, and this does include eight existing trees that they wish to preserve there. So as noted in the staff report, staff finds that the proposed deviations are appropriate for the site as development is, again, maximized as much as possible. This includes utilizing the underground stormwater system that's underneath the surface parking lot, the underground parking. The proposed setbacks should still provide for sufficient solar access, room for landscaping and sidewalks, and the building height would be compatible with the commercial properties that are nearby. Also, the inclusion of sidewalks would promote walkability, pedestrian access to the site, and also just proximity to the commercial amenities that are nearby, reducing the, the need for additional parking. So worth noting is that the applicant has initiated a parking study for this site, that was not done at, at the request of staff, nor is that a requirement in the code, but as a condition of approval, staff would recommend that parking study be provided. And on the topic of parking, per the comp plan, staff would like to see parking spaces dedicated as part of the site plan, just, just dedicated for electric vehicle charging, not necessarily installed, but designated for possible use in the future. For stormwater management, the applicant will need to obtain a permit through the watershed district, and as part of the, the plating process, the applicant will be required to pay for park dedication. Here's a 3D rendering of the site. Again, this is 155-unit, four-story apartment building, so the top image shows the north side of the building, and the bottom image, image shows the south side of the building. So a few other items I'd like to cover, this is more related to the site plan requirements, but trash enclosures, outdoor ground utilities should be identified on the site plan and screened appropriately per the zoning ordinance. And then there are two fire hydrants shown on the, the plans for this development, one on the north side of the building and one on the west side, and the fire marshal should assure that the westerly hydrant is not too close to the building at being placed 25 feet away. The Public Works Utility Superintendent should determine if the existing water stub off Marketplace should be removed since the stub off 32nd Street is being proposed for the service. Given the height of this building, the developer should determine if a booster pump for domestic water and also fire protection is going to be necessary here. Also, the results of a sewer study that was conducted with the city partnering with a consultant back in May of 2022, so this year, it revealed, revealed that there is sufficient capacity in this area to serve for future residential use, however, it's the city's expectation that the developer be responsible for any increase in flow to the area lift station, and that's located near the intersection of Ideal Avenue and Stillwater Boulevard, so the applicant, the developer would be responsible for that overage beyond the amount listed in the comp plan, and the sewer availability charge is estimated to be about $300 per unit. So here's another rendering of the site. I would like to note separately that there was a letter of support for this project that was provided by Avalon Group LLC, and that was sent to the commission earlier today. And with that, there's a lot of information, but staff recommends approval of this request, subject to, there's 16 conditions listed in the two resolutions, and I think they are pretty significant, so I will go through those, bear with me just a moment. So for, in the resolution for the preliminary and final plat, the conditions of approval are as follows: Approval of an amendment to the Oakdale Marketplace Plan Unit Development to allow multifamily use; Execution of a site improvement performance agreement; Approval of the public improvements construction plans by the city engineer; Permits and approvals must be obtained from other regulatory agencies and proof of approvals must be provided to the city; Satisfaction of park dedication requirements; An additional sewer availability charge of $300 per unit be collected on the density of the site above 10 units per acre; And the developer enter into an agreement with the city and Washington County to contribute towards the cost of improvements at the intersection of 34th Street North and Marketplace North. The final plat must be revised as necessary to meet all requirements of the city attorney's plat opinion, and that the buyer slash developer shall further adhere to all recommendations of the city attorney regarding title matters and recording instructions for instruments associated with development. Moving on to the resolution for the site plan. First condition is permits and approvals must be obtained from the Valley Branch. Watershed District, the developer designate parking spaces as possible electric vehicle charging stations in the parking plans. Submittal of a parking study for the proposed number of parking spaces. Update the site plan to show the locations of all outdoor ground mechanical equipment and trash and recycling areas, along with proper screening of these features. Obtain approval from the city's fire marshal for the proposed fire hydrant locations. Obtain a determination and approval from the city's utility superintendent to remove the water stub on Marketplace North if necessary. The developer provide a booster pump for domestic water and fire protection for the building if needed, and this last condition was, it's embedded in the PUD ordinance amendment, but the direction that we got from the city attorney's office is that it should be, it's more appropriate to be placed in the conditions of the, the site plan approval, and that is the developer include additional placemaking and decorative elements along the east side of the building, fronting Marketplace North. And the applicant is here in attendance, otherwise I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Luke. I had a couple of questions that I posed to you earlier. Given the reduced number of parking spaces, one question is what, what kind of bus operations do we have on 34th Street to help residents get to wherever they need to be?
Yes, so currently, there is no bus route along 34th Street. The nearest bus route would be Stillwater Boulevard, so that's just a little bit off the map here to the south, but yes, at this time, there is no bus route serving.
Actually, I'll give you a correction on that, there is one, it's the morning and evening routes, coming from Stillwater going down to St. Paul, and then from St. Paul back to Stillwater in the evening. There's four, four, four times a day, in the morning, four times in the evening. I only know that because I used to take it occasionally to go to 3M.
Okay.
I don't know, I, I checked on Metro Transit this morning, because that was my exact question, is what kind of transit is in here, and it said there is no transit available.
So they may have canceled that. Okay. And then the other question is, on, on the sewage, we approved another building on the north side of 34th, and there were questions about sewage treatment and the size of the pipe and all that. Back then, how does this play into the, those requirements?
Yes, so the, the sewer systems are completely separate. North of 34th Street, it, it flows, gets directed in a totally different direction. South of 34th Street, that, that lift station, that, that direction goes south, and the lift station is at the Ideal Stillwater Boulevard, so yeah, different systems.
That clears that up, any questions from commissioners?
Just a question. So all these units are market rate units?
Correct.
No affordable years?
That's correct.
Okay. How would, does Oakdale sort of address sort of affordability if you have this big development coming in and there's nothing affordable, it's all market rate? How do you address that, knowing that we have a crisis in this, the country for several roof over people's heads?
I mean, that's a, a big, high-level policy topic, I, I don't know that I'm, I could even tackle that in, in the times to just discuss this, this application. We have other requests, you know, for those types of housing options, but I guess I'm, I'm only looking at, at this proposal, and it's, as the applicant is proposing, it's all market rate.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just to, I guess, clarification, everything in here says 155 total units, but when I add it up, I get 163. So we should just make sure that we're all talking the same, accurate, so.
That's page, page one of the Samba Tech request, is what you're talking, talking about.
Yeah, the staff report restates it, page four, item two as well. And item four.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? With that, I open the public hearing for this, anyone wishing to make comment, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Josh McKinney with Measure Group, I'm a consultant for the applicant, so certainly can answer any of your questions, but I, I note that there's a couple of them right off the bat, so it's 155 units, market rate apartments. One of the other comments was relative to parking, and Luke had mentioned just briefly the need for a, or that we've engaged with a parking, for a parking study from a traffic engineer. So that's, that report will actually be issued next week, but per his ITE manual review, our proposed development would generate, or would generate the need for 199 stalls, and we are at 250 stalls. So one of the things that we've looked at as well, just internally, because we're somewhat constrained for surface area, we've, we've, we've started to approach the, the gas easement folks to determine if it's possible to generate a proof of parking over that area, if they would be open for those discussions. It's one of those things that we couldn't show you in the plan, simply because it's nothing I can commit to at this point in time, so I just want to let you know that, you know, we're certainly interested in making sure, we believe we have enough parking based on what our consultants are saying, but certainly wanted to provide you some additional comfort that we're, we're pursuing those options as well. And as far as the, 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 what am I saying, or trying to say here, the, the conditions of approval, excuse me, we're comfortable with all of them, and really kind of want to work with both the city as well as Target and the, and the Oakdale Marketplace kind of group to determine what those increased theming options would look like along Marketplace. So it's going to be kind of a group effort, something that, once again, I don't think it's, you know, necessarily one person can kind of go out and front here, we really do need to kind of circle back with the city's request or requirement. Otherwise, we're really excited to be a part of Oakdale, we think, if you want to just pull up the, kind of the overall plan, one of the things that we thought, thank you, one of the things that we thought unique was, you know, there is a lot of open commercial land that's been vacant since 2005, and actually, you know, in discussions with Avalon, who's obviously got very good relationships with Target, and also, just for the record, our project need will need approvals from Target in order to proceed as a part of our operating agreements. But what I'd say is, we view our use as complimentary to the, to the commercial use, in that additional rooftops, walkable to those commercial uses would be a benefit to both Target, as well as any additional retail or commercial opportunities that we're in, are going to be upcoming in even closer proximity than Target. So we think, overall, it's an opportunity to kind of kickstart that area from a development standpoint, something that's been vacant for a long time, and really kind of want to kind of get, get the party started, so to speak, with this type of use. It's got good access, and it's got a good adjacency to other things that our residents would really benefit from, such as the fitness user, as well as pins, and kind of, it's certainly an amenity-rich area for our, our residents. So with that, I would be open to any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Can you tell us a little bit about what's in that courtyard? It looks like that's, you've, you've got kind of a semi-below-grade parking, so I assume that's above the parking deck?
That's correct.
And limited landscaping, et cetera.
So we're actually going to be dropping the plank on that courtyard by 16 inches, so we will be able to get some shrubbery and some landscaping in that area. We're going to be utilizing artificial turf for the areas, just, I'm a landscape architect in the state of Minnesota, it doesn't work, turf on top of rooftops without a pretty deep section, and so we're be utilizing, you know, lawn for things, or artificial turf for things like, you know, bocce, we're thinking bags, like really more informal opportunities for our residents to meet each other and kind of, you know, kind of chance encounters in those areas, as well as grill stations, fire pits, gazebos, those kind of things to really kind of round that space out. We did look at a pool at one point in time, the unfortunate thing with pools in the state of Minnesota is, you have a limited use window relative to some of these other programmatic elements that we want to install, and then also really did start to impact our ability to park the basement with enough stalls at a one-to-one ratio. So that's really kind of the genesis of how we got to that, where we're at, and then also recognizing that our position within, you know, this area that was additionally, originally slated for commercial, wanting to provide opportunities for things like dog runs, tot lots, and some other things, utilizing as much of the, the area that we could, given the current easement restrictions that we've got along the west side. So we're, we would love to expand those amenities if it was possible, and certainly working through that with the gas company.
Is there a particular reason, as a landscape architect, I'm sure you can appreciate this?
Yes.
If our requirement is 20 Boulevard trees, and you have 15?
Yeah.
Why are you not just making up the other five somewhere else?
We, we certainly can, I think the requirement is on the Boulevard itself, though, if I'm, if, if I'm correct, is that accurate? And if it's not, we will, is the answer. But I think the reason was the placement of the original trees and the type and species of them, we didn't want to overcrowd them. If we would have started from scratch, we could have gotten more, more trees by different species, but if, if the, I, I believe the code language is supposed to be within the Boulevard due to the, the length, if I recall correctly, and if it's, if it isn't, and Luke will, probably looking right now, will get it corrected, and before council, it will be compliant.
There'd be room for that in a marketplace, if you drive on that side, there isn't really trees there now, there should be room for trees.
There certainly, yeah, in total, though, relative to that area, yep. So I think we were, if you look at our landscape plan, I know that rendering didn't do a great job of showing that, what the, what the actual landscape plan is. I know we, we have put additional trees along that eastern side, but certainly with the city's requirement to kind of play up the thematic elements as well for the eastern side, we would be wanting to do even more, so that's kind of where we're, where we're at currently.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is there any mechanical on the roof? Anything that's going to be above that 46 feet 10 inches?
You know, that's a great question.
Because that's going to be seen as well.
I think there, typically with these, there are some small air handlers, so, so like basically, even like almost a residential size that's located in the center of the building, four hallways only, the other equipment is generally located within the basement for these type of structures. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to come forward at this moment to speak to this issue? And once again, anyone else wish to come forward at this moment to speak to this issue? At that point, I'll close the public hearing, and come back, any further questions for Luke or amongst ourselves?
I guess just, for me, my concern is the parking. Without seeing the parking study, and the fact that there's no transit here, I'm concerned that we're not hitting, or the applicant is not hitting, our, our parking requirements. I'm torn whether my, whether we approve it pending that, because it doesn't give us that opportunity to look at it, it's just hoping that it, it comes out right.
Luke, when does this come before the city council, and will the parking study be done before then?
Well, as the applicant noted, if, if the parking study is completed next week, that, that will be before the city council would act on this on September 27th.
So they, they would have the information about update from the parking study at that time?
The city council would, yes.
That's adequate review for that, I would assume.
I don't know, I'm, I'm just struggling with it, and it's, it's a bias that I have right now, because I'm going through some parking issues on a project that I'm working on, and I know-
going through some parking issues on a project that I'm working on. And I know that you can make us, you can make a report, say what you want it to say. So I'm just, I would feel more comfortable if we were able to look at that and make comment on that. But that's just me.
The only resolution on that would be to table it then, and I hesitate to do that at this point. Go for it.
I do, I don't have a concern about the parking so much, I have a concern about fair housing. I'm a big advocate of fair housing. You have this big project here, big opportunity for Oakdale to address fair housing. And I know that they have spoken to extensively in their complaint. This is not addressing that, and I have an issue with that. So I'm going to be waiting now.
I can't help, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna barge in, okay? Because we are addressing affordable housing. There are some projects on the table. They're in different areas. This is not one of them, but there are two on the docket that we are looking at. So, so this is a separate entity. So we, I don't think you should hold them in accountable for the affordable housing, because we are doing affordable housing.
I'm not holding them.
I know, but.
I'm holding the city, not them.
Right, but if you don't approve them, you are.
No, so to me.
But I'm telling you as a city council.
Shouldn't be packed on some island away from the entire city. I think they should be all part of one community. So we say, we do have those, but they're dressed in one area, but not this particular area. I feel to me that you separating affordability based on something. So I have an issue with that.
I, I would, I would respectfully disagree with you. I think if we don't have, if there's nothing in the zoning, nothing in the code that is requiring new multifamily development to have an affordable component, then it is not their responsibility as a developer, whether we agree with it or not, to have an affordable element. I, I would guarantee you that if, if it was financially feasible, they would incorporate it. Unfortunately, it's with the cost of housing today and what it's going to cost them to develop this, it's not feasible to put affordable in every project, unless you get government support. And I don't know if you have, you know, this is probably just a straight-up commercial deal. You got an investor putting in cash and there's a lender that's, that's lending against it, no government subsidies.
Well, so maybe we need to think outside the box a little bit. So if we require them to provide that much, parking costs a lot of money. Or maybe we shouldn't be requiring to provide that much parking so that the saving could go someplace else. So that's not your call, but that is somebody else's call.
But, but even.
At this juncture, I think I'm going to have to try and hold a halt, a halt on this because quite honestly, I understand the issue.
Okay.
But that has to be addressed in a, in a different fashion. I'm not sure that this particular topic is the place for that. We, you know, I understand you want affordable housing, but that has to go into how we, how we zone. And, and yeah, we're making a change to the P U D here, but it's not quite the same as a zoning change.
Fair enough.
Okay. Any further questions?
One quick question. Maybe it was already answered. I missed. The total number between 155 and 163, did that get answered? It is 155, even though the numbers add up. Okay, all right. I didn't want to make sure.
Can you?
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Math challenged. Which begs the question on the design issues, but for the architect.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, I apologize. Another question for the applicant. Can you try to further expand on the parking? Because I'm.
Sure.
I, I emailed Luke earlier and I said, as is, I don't know that I can vote to support this. And you don't want to go to council with two no votes, so.
No, that's correct. So, no, I appreciate that. So Luke and I actually spoke this morning, you know, regarding, you know, hey, you better have an answer for parking. I reached out to our traffic folks. He said, hey, I've been in Europe for the past few weeks, which is an unfortunate circumstance for us.
Good for him.
Yeah, right. So I forwarded the email that I received from him. And I, I don't, I'm not a traffic engineer by any stretch of the imagination, but he's basically using the I T manuals for suburban multifamily. And that he, he came up with 199 stalls for that use. So.
That was based on a one-bedroom, one, one stall per bedroom, as I.
That's correct. That's correct.
Which is a little tight on what we have used for others.
Sure. And fair enough. So we generally like to park, just as a group, like to park it heavier than that. So we've, we're parking at 250 stalls for 155 units. So, you know, a, a bit heavier, obviously, than required or, or would be required, I guess, using I T E. I would say on similar buildings that we've done, it, the parking, you know, we don't want to underpark our, our buildings either, right? That's the number one complaint you'd end up getting from a resident, certainly not interested in dealing with that in the future. And so depending on where we're at, you know, within the metro, you know, we've had parking, you know, significantly less than this one. But most of them, I would say, you know, correct me wrong. Yeah, one, between 1.6 and 1.8 stalls per, per unit. So. Yeah. So it falls within that range. And actually, I think there, we had, we did a deal, it was like 1.4, and it was still in the suburbs. So, but it was really based on the, the unit mix as well. So.
And I think that's partly where my concern is, is, you know, you've got a significant number of two and three bedroom units.
Sure.
And so I, and I totally, I mean, my business is in retail and I.
Sure.
Get it. Like you can't underpark because.
Right.
Those people just don't stay with you. The thing that I'm coming back to is, if there was good transit here or any transit here. I think it'd be an easier pill to swallow to say, that's fine. I like your thought of paper, can you, can you work with those utilities and paper park over that?
Yeah.
I know that that's not uncommon for us to do is just.
So we know, we know, for example, that we're able to put things like those fence, the fence posts in, in that area. Obviously have to pothole all those utilities. So it's possible we'd be able to do like some tandem stalls on the backside. Those aren't necessarily, you know, the, our, our number one option, right? So I guess, you know, coming back to the unit mix and why it's important in this case is that we do have twos and threes, but the, kind of the renting profile chain has changed so drastically since COVID, relative to twos and threes, where you have a pretty significant population using that second bedroom for an office, for, to work from home. So the actual population of these buildings has reduced from what we'd see, you know, pre-COVID, we'll say.
I, I think that is a fair and accurate statement. I, many of my rental properties, the two bedrooms are occupied by singles.
So.
Yeah, it's, it's worth it to them to pay the little bit more.
Absolutely.
To have that extra space.
And, and, you know, ultimately, they're basically saying that I save money by not driving into the office, you know? So they're able to put that more. And that's where we've, we're actually feeling more comfortable, you know, putting additional amenities in buildings like this because we know people are around the entire day. It's not just, you know, between the hours of, you know, six and eight and, you know, six and eight on both sides where people are experiencing the amenities.
So the question, you're, you're pursuing this issue with the, over the easement?
Yes.
With them, will that be resolved?
I'm certainly hoping so. It's something we'd, we'd love to indicate relative to the ability to park that, but that's, I, once again, I couldn't come to you tonight with the, you know, giving you the statement of, hey, we got this all worked out with the pipeline, no problems at all. That I was not able to.
It's more important that it be done by the time city council gets it.
Correct. Right.
Yeah, I, I guess I have come around to this, I can be okay with parking pending your parking report. I would ask that you continue to work with those utilities to see if there's, or just even the site in general. Is there additional paper parking that you can put on here? You don't build it right away, but.
Yep.
That way it's there if you need it.
Sure.
And then with those five trees, if we can just find a spot for them.
Absolutely. I, I just want to, I recognize, your concern is valid, sir, relative to affordable housing. I work on a lot of affordable housing all across the metro. We do have an issue relative to construction costs, relative to the ability to provide affordable housing, in that a unit for an affordable project costs the same amount to build as a unit for market rate. So that gap has to be filled. A stud costs the same amount, whether it's affordable unit or not. A parking stall, same thing. So I understand what you're saying and I appreciate, and certainly is, you know, those projects that can, can absorb affordable units are, you know, some of the best ones I work on, honestly. This simply can't. And certainly, or I shouldn't say camp without additional government subsidy in the form of either low-income housing tax credits or city-provided TIF. And so those two things are very difficult to obtain and certainly kind of a completely, you know, wholesale different ask from the city, both the city and the state, to facilitate this project. So that's how we got here relative to market rate versus affordability.
I would add one more thing. I'm sorry, guys.
I should have reopened the hearing, given, given your earlier comments.
This is, this isn't a question for you. It's just a comment, though. I, I find the architecture of the building to be a little bit lacking. So I, I don't know if there's anything you can do to, it just feels very flat and it's.
Sure.
Maybe just the rendering.
I think it's some of it's the renderings. We had the same comment, actually, with the renderings, so.
I know, it's always difficult.
Yeah.
Now I'm done.
Are you done?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing silence. I do have a question. The, the motion you've phrased is just one motion. Feels like this should be three separate motions.
Well. I guess what I've seen is that these combined applications approved with one, one single motion from, it's, it's a single recommendation from the commission. If you, I guess, want to separate it out into four separate recommendations.
My only concern, I'm kind of with Dallas here, is I don't know that you're going to get consensus on all of them. So I think it might be best to, to split them up.
And I would, at this point, I'd just say three, the preliminary and final.
Together.
Can go together.
Okay.
You've got three resolutions going to the, to the city council. Those are the reflection of that is what I'm seeking. So given that, I would seek a motion for, if I can find the right place. Seek a motion to approve the amendment to allow multifamily use on an outlet. For the P U D agreement to allow multifamily use in the Outlet A of Oakdale Marketplace fifth edition. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Question.
Aye.
Wait a minute.
Question before we get to voting. Are you talking about Exhibit D?
Exhibit D is.
Are you voting on Exhibit E?
Is the reflection of the line item that.
Okay, let's get to that.
Motion to recommend approval of the P U D amendment.
D is the P U D, E is the final and prelim and final plat. K F is site plan.
So all those in favor of passing the P U D amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
I would know.
So noted. The second one is the preliminary and final plat. Resolution to approving the preliminary and final plat for the Oakdale Marketplace sixth edition, subject to the conditions listed therein. Have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
I wouldn't know.
And the final one is the resolution approving the site plan for the Oakdale Marketplace Apartments with conditions and the addition that Luke had stated.
So moved.
So moved.
I'll, I'll make the motion. You can second me, Lee.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I wouldn't know.
Okay. All three passed with the vote against. Thank you so much. We're moving the city council update up to this point. So Colleen, if you want to make your comments.
Busy night, huh? So, just quickly, a few things. I just wanted to talk about the BRIA program. And that's something we went in conjunction with the O A C C, the Area Chamber of Commerce. And the BRIA, it stands for Business Retention, Expansion, and Attraction Program. So what we're doing is going around to 12 different businesses and interviewing the owners and asking for some feedback. And we're going to get back to people and get a list and what we can do for the city. So anyway, our first one just happened at Platinum Bank. And so I go to one next week. So there's someone from the O A C C is on it, someone from council is on it, staff at least has one or two people on it. So there's a group of like four people that are going to this. So I think it's a really neat program. So I just wanted to let you guys know what was going on with that. So the other thing is, just an FYI on permits. There is a requirement for permits on everything, basically. Even if it's the same size, you know, it's just like windows. If you're replacing a window, it's the same size window. You're not changing it, you still need a permit to change that. So the city does have requirements for all that. So just for future reference, if you're doing any remodeling, it has nothing to do with whether you're changing the structure or, you know, the size of it. You still need a permit. So I just wanted to clear that up. So any other chain, questions for me that you have?
No, just thank you.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, it sounds like you may want to take back to your fellow council members, this affordable housing.
Well, I, I think he, no offense, I don't think you have all the information to make that determination, but, but we are working on that. So it's hard for me to sit here and say, you, you just don't have all the information. There is affordable housing and we do talk about it a lot. So it is a struggle with all cities. And actually, Oakdale is in a better position than most of our surrounding cities. So statistically, we're much better. So not that, that doesn't stop us. We're trying to keep improving. And there are a couple of programs underway. So.
Maybe I just need a little bit more education because.
Yes.
I work for St. Paul. I've been there for 20 some years.
Right.
So land use is my wheelhouse. So.
Yep.
Yeah, I just need a little bit more education.
We'll debate about that later.
So, but anyway, I just wanted, yeah. But, so I will bring that back. But anyway, anything else?
Seeing none?
Yep.
Will, thank you very much, Colleen.
All right. Thank you.
We'll move on to the item six, A Bicycle Pedestrian Plan Update and Workshop.
Hi, all. Thank you for having me. So just as a reminder, my name is Shannon Reilinger. I am a senior, senior community development specialist for the city of Oakdale. And I am the staff liaison in conjunction with Tool Design Group, who is our consultant, who is helping us launch a bike and pedestrian plan system update. So Luke does have, we have a PowerPoint that I'm going to walk you guys through, hopefully do it as fast as possible because I know that you've already been doing a lot tonight. So the purpose of this conversation tonight is twofold. First, I want to provide you some context for our updated project to update the bike and pedestrian plan. And second, we're going to lead you through a facilitated workshop to identify some of the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats that are already inherent in Oakdale's existing bike and pedestrian facilities. So first with the context, next slide, please. The city does have a bike and pedestrian plan. It was created in 1995. So as you can see, it, it needs a little bit of, of polishing and update. And that's for a couple of different reasons. One, because the city has changed a lot in the past 30 years. It's experienced a significant amount of growth. And with that comes new needs that our residents. And with that comes new needs that our residents and visitors have for walking and biking in Oakdale. And secondly, because the city's 2040 comprehensive plan specifically calls out biking and walking in its goals and policies. You can see here that biking and walking is mentioned in chapter three, the transportation plan, or transportation chapter, next slide, please. And in chapter five, the parks and trails chapter. So there's a lot of need to update the plan and that's why we have contracted with Tool Design to do so. Tool Design Group has done a number of bike and pedestrian plan updates across the Twin Cities, so they provide a wealth of knowledge and information for us. We did start this project in 2019 and then the pandemic put a hold on it. And so we've relaunched again as of May of this year and are going through a number of planning steps to finally complete this project. Next slide, please. So those planning steps, like I mentioned, there are five of them. The first is to figure out what existing facilities are already here in Oakdale. So you'll see, we have a map on the right-hand side that indicates current shared use paths, sidewalks, and bicycle lanes. This map shows where all of the marked crosswalks are currently in Oakdale. Next slide, please. Same map, only now this map shows where all of the bustups are in Oakdale. These are draft maps currently, they're being reviewed by our city engineer and others who would have a little bit more knowledge of these particular facilities, but this is what currently exists. Next slide, please. And then this is a map of planned facilities, not just facilities planned by the city and its CIP and comp plan, but also planned facilities that intersect from other cities in the area. So North St. Paul, Woodbury have their own bike and pedestrian systems that have some sort of connection to Oakdale, those are on this map. And then some of the planned facilities that are coming out of our regional systems are on this map as well. I would note that not everything that is on this map is currently funded. So this is basically to try and understand if everything that is recommended in the region was implemented, that has something to do with Oakdale, what would that look like so that we would know the consequences for our own bike and ped update. Next slide, please. Finally, this is a destination analysis that was completed back in the first phase of the project before the pandemic put it on hold. This is just to have a better sense of where there's more need for bike and pedestrian facilities in the city. So darker shaded areas are places where there's a higher likelihood of destinations being required, lower shaded areas is where there's the lower likelihood. Next slide. Step two of the process is to seek public input. This is where you guys come in tonight and this is where we're also tapping into a number of our other advisory bodies, to our city council, and to the public. So part of seeking input in our public engagement plan calls for meeting with the Environmental Management Commission and with you all, our advisory bodies, at a couple of different phases throughout the project. It calls for a meeting with city council to make sure that they are fully aware of everything that we're doing. We will be conducting a number of touchpoints with the public, so we'll be doing an open house where anyone can come and provide commentary and feedback. Hopefully that will be at the Discovery Center. There'll be a couple of pop-up workshops that's designed to gather feedback from people where they are, so say like the farmer's market or Tool Design is around the library or even a grocery store, just trying to capture feedback from people as they're going about their everyday lives. We will also do focus groups to try and get some feedback from individuals who maybe have not gone to the open house or the pop-up workshops. And then finally, we'll do an online questionnaire. It'll be available through the city's website and that's a really easy place for people to provide feedback when they don't have to go to a workshop or anything else, they can just do it from their couch. Next slide. You can skip that one, that just shows you that we've gone to council and will continue to go to council for their feedback. Step three in this process is to make plan recommendations. So Tool will provide us with, after we've done all of the public input, they will synthesize all that feedback and provide us with some draft goals and strategies. And then they'll take those goals and strategies and create a network recommendation map for us. This is an example from a different community of what that network map would look like. Next slide. Step four is to implement the network recommendations. So Tool will give us all of the resources that we need to figure out what these projects would look like in order to get to that network recommendation map and then what it would actually cost and resources to get there. So they'll provide us with criteria for prioritizing these projects, a map with all of the projects laid out and IDed, and then also a spreadsheet similar to the one that you see here on this, in this slide, that shows just a planning level detail what's going to be required to get to these recommendations. Next slide. And then finally, we will have our draft plan. This is an example on this slide of a different city's draft. It'll go in front of our different commissions, like you all, for review and in front of city council. And then edits will be made along the way before it's sent out to the greater public. They will get a chance to provide commentary on it. And then finally, we will have our bike and pedestrian plan that will need to be approved by city council. Next slide. You can see here, the project started end of May, early June, and it's slated to be completed by March of 2023. Next slide. All right. That was a whiz through everything that I had in my presentation. So if you have any questions, feel free to shoot them my way along the way. But we're going to move into the facilitated part of this conversation where you get to get up, move around, and share your own thoughts as Oakdale residents. So what I am asking you to do now is a SWOT analysis, which is pretty common in a lot of organizations. So I'm going to give you some post-it notes and I'm going to ask you to write down your thoughts in four different categories. So first, what are the strengths? Next, weaknesses? Next, opportunities? And finally, threats regarding biking and walking in Oakdale? So as you're thinking about that, there is a slide in the presentation that helps you kind of expand your idea of what these categories mean. So when we talk about strengths, what are you proud of in the city when it comes to biking and walking and the current facilities that exist for that? Weaknesses, what things drive you nuts? Opportunities, are there organizations already doing work or upcoming projects we should know about? Are there opportunities for collaboration? And finally, threats, what are the external voices that make it difficult to make Oakdale more friendly for bicycling and walking? So I'm going to time this at 10 minutes so you can get all your thoughts hopefully in 10 minutes. I'm going to put up some, like, really large stick pads on the wall back there and I'll label them with a category. And once you're done, feel free to put them up underneath the corresponding category. You can do as many or as few in each category as you want. Make sense?
This is going to make for some exciting TV.
Oh, yeah. Well, we did it with the EMC first. It's super fun.
This may not find its way back to the city, just.
That's totally fair.
Put back up on the screen those four subjects.
The SWOT.
The SWOT, please, thank you.
Now that the teacher's gone, we should all share our answers.
It's hard if you don't have the mindset of riding a bike, to have that view.
I'm limited to my scope of where I walk.
Yeah, well, walking's been really good. Yeah. But if I'm not on a bike, I don't realize what issues there could be.
Yeah.
My bike is a stationary bike at the gym, especially since my surgery.
Yeah.
I have a neighbor up the street that's legally blind and that's all his transportation is, so he's, it works for him in the wintertime and otherwise, and he has lots of complaints. I hear lots of complaints about the biking part of it. Only way of getting around.
Quick question for you. Since 1995, what was the plan that came out in 1995? Did it get implemented pretty well or?
That's a great question and I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was their vision come, I mean, I mean, it's, yeah, it'd just be interesting to know what they had and what happened.
Yeah, our consultant has asked us to share the 1995 plan because I think that he's really curious to know too. I'm not sure that the new update is going to really say much about the previous plan. So, you know, we may never know exactly what was implemented, but it's a great question. Well, that I'll take back.
Okay.
Yeah. And I should have specified too, you're looking for kind of one concept per post-it note. So if you have a bunch of different ideas on one post-it note, you may want to break them out a little bit. I apologize for not clarifying that.
I knew what you were thinking. I just did that.
Thank you.
Do you get to keep all these pens when you
Nick, do your consulting keep them to us? We're going to put pistachios.
I labeled my threats, but I put them down as weakness instead, so.
That's okay. All right, so the next step of the process, and thank you, you guys, that was literally 10 minutes, so perfect. The next step of the process is we're going to organize some of these post-it notes into general themes, and make sure that we're kind of clumping all of your thoughts together into small little groups. And so to do that, I'm going to ask Lee, Yaya, and Dallas, if you guys could work on grouping up the strengths category and the weaknesses category. And then Chris and Mike, if you guys could focus on opportunities and threats. As you are identifying themes, please put those post-it notes together and then just write down what the title or the theme is.
I'm sure we're supposed to label those.
Yes, please do. And if you want to, you can like put a circle around them to indicate what the clumps are, whatever you want to do, just. Yep. There you go.
It's not going to bleed through the walls?
No.
No, it didn't last time. That was a question.
To be resident.
Your handwriting's sorry. About the same as mine.
That didn't bleed through, did it? No, it didn't last time. Okay, we're fine.
Yaya, what's your threat here? I can't read it.
What did you say?
Address explosion contours, something washing over sidewalks.
Oh.
Can't read it.
Oh, address erosion control. So between, on high, on Oak, on Granada, between 14th and 40th. There's a pipeline present on east side, when it rains, wash off into the sidewalk and wash over the streets.
Same thing at Walton, by the ball fields, it rains and all, the sand and stuff comes in.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
What if there are no common themes?
No, that's totally fair. Take your best shot at it and if you can't find any common themes, then maybe just summarize the post-it notes with a couple of words.
This one, in case you don't know, it says not much availability between to ride to the fifth and eleventh. When I go to Hattie, I get stuck there. Stuck in the highway.
They're starting, they're starting.
Oh, that's what they're doing there?
Yeah.
Oh, good, good, good.
But it's still weak.
Yeah, right now.
Okay.
Insufficient. Sticking lights crossings.
Actually, that's.
Not bleed through, so we're good.
Thank you. Didn't think to check on that.
Uh-oh.
Stickers.
For being a good student, get a sticker.
It's like one of the fair.
Yeah.
I remain stickerless. No, I was taking off.
His comment.
You still go in the biking class?
That's a long story, probably not best to put over the year.
Okay.
LA Fitness basically fired the last normal one cycle instructor. So I have, I have no access because I have no time to use.
Get opportunities?
We combined it with threats.
Did you?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I can split it up again if you want. I'll just have two then.
Yeah, well, when we get there, we'll figure it out. Okay, so.
Watch out.
Before you all sit down again, sorry, three of the five of you, if each group will go through and just explain what your clumped themes are, starting with strengths, and then we'll just move down.
The next step.
Oh, not right yet.
We go through and you say that.
We have some to bribe you with office supplies.
Exactly.
We have pride in being a resident of Oakdale and that Oakdale tries to make everyone happy with and addressing problems and doing the best possible ways. We have shopping access. We have park access. We decent, and we have a good start of places to be able to walk through the city, and main roads have walkways.
We can't hear you, so we're going to have to do this slightly different. Can you just grab that off of the wall?
And come through the mic.
Yep, and then come up to the mic and say everything again. Thank you.
We have, we're proud to be a resident here in Oakdale. That's one of our strengths, and it's, and Oakdale seems to address everything nicely, and issue, and all the issues are usually addressed nicely. And we have shopping access, good shopping access. We have good park accesses, lots of parks, lots of dog parks, regular parks, lots of existing walking throughout the city. And our main roads have, most of our main roads right now, we're working on it, are having good access.
Whoops.
Whoops.
There you go.
That's not part of the recording.
Okay, we are. Okay, our weaknesses, oh no. So the weaknesses is insufficiencies. There's not much bike rideability along Highway 14. The need to have more pathways and not enough sidewalks throughout the city, but it's, it's better than most. Maintenance is walks aren't plowed quickly enough or completely, and winter paths need to be cleaned more often. And so that would be a maintenance problem and a weight in weaknesses. Your designation threats are Sentry and Geneva. They were, they appear to be dangerous. Crossing to 3M Center from Southwest Corner of Oakdale. Unspecified, unsignaled crossings and high-traffic intersections. It's men's, the way they write. It's, it's like hieroglyphics here. So here we are. It's, walks should be with pedestrians on bikes that are, that make it difficult. And that would be the designation types of weaknesses that need to be worked on.
Great, okay. Opportunities and threats, if you could also just bring them off the tape or off the wall.
So opportunities, it was primarily like infrastructure-type opportunities in working with, you know, the two comments were to kind of improving along 10th Street as well as piggybacking off of the bridge that's going to go across from Oakdale over into Woodbury, that new Gold Line Bridge, and just incorporating pedestrian and bicycle walkways through there. So that's what we had for opportunities. For threats, we kind of bucketed them into environmental threats. So that was, you know, erosion control, sand washing over things, plow, not being plowed, things like that. Political threats as far as just capital to do all of these improvements, as well as areas where you have multiple municipalities that are controlling a section of road, particularly Highway 120, where everybody seems to go like that. And then the last one was again, infrastructure. Again, just, this was talking about kind of stoplights and major roads and just the difficulty of those larger infrastructure things. How do you get people across safely and kind of maneuver through those?
Awesome. So if you want to put those back up, and if you could make the post-it notes a little bit more visible under each category because we are going to be voting now on specific categories, and people might need to remember what's all in each category. For opportunities, since there are really only one category, you can probably feel free to vote on individual ideas. All right, so thank you for sharing. The final part of this SWOT analysis has to do with the stickers that you now have in front of you. So you're only going to be using one row of stickers. You have four stickers to vote with. And for each category, you're going to vote for the most significant group or theme or the one that most calls out your attention. So, and strengths, you're going to vote for the one thing that you think is the most important strength of the existing system for biking and walking in Oakdale. And weaknesses, the, the one thing that is the most important consideration for the system right now. Same with opportunities. Even though there are two ideas there, you can feel free to vote for the most important one for you. And then for threats, what's the most significant theme there when it comes to threats for the existing system? So again, you have four stickers. It'll only vote for one category on each of the areas. Make sense?
Do you want us to put any particular color down for what we think is? So all colors mean important.
Yep.
So each have a color, is that what? One, two, three, four?
No, the colors don't matter.
So it's just one, one on each page as to what's, what we think is the most important on the page?
So I can go rogue, I can use one of each?
Yeah. Yeah.
Making this very, more difficult than it needs to be.
Probably. So only one sticker per category?
Oops, excuse me.
And one particular one?
All right, so. I'm going to read back what your consensus is. So we had the majority of votes for the strengths category under the good start theme. So as a consensus, you guys seem to believe that Oakdale has a lot of good infrastructure already in place to provide a great foundation. For weaknesses, it was a pretty good majority here too. There are four votes for, what was this again?
Designation.
Designation, right. So the safety of things, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. For opportunities, there are quite a number of votes around this concept of the bridge into Woodbury, just trying to make those connections a little bit more clear. And then for threats, the consensus was around this political theme. So just trying to understand how the politics of everything interplays into future systems and our ability to fund those future systems and get them in place. All right. If we could pull our PowerPoint up one last time here. Go forward a couple of slides, this slide. All right, so that was a SWOT analysis. We were able to do that with the Environmental Management Commission when our consultant was here and did a much better job. Thank you so much for doing it with us, with me tonight, even though I'm not the consultant. You did a great abbreviated version. We'll be doing this as well with the Economic Development Commission and with the Parks and Rec Commission so that they can provide their thoughts and feedback at this stage. What will happen is we will take your feedback from tonight. We'll also take all of the feedback from the public engagement phase of the plan itself and turn that into goals and objectives. Those goals and objectives will be refined in the open house and in the focus groups, and they will also be refined by council. And then they will move into the recommendation phase of the project. So our consultant will take all of this really good feedback on what currently exists, what people would like to see in the future, and then generate a plan for us. Hopefully, it will be a plan that is very informed by actual Oakdale residents and business owners, people who come here and love this city, and will be reflective of what the needs are of the people who live here, not just the consultant who's putting together the plan itself. And last slide is if you guys have any further comments, if there's anything that you saw on the maps tonight that you think is maybe a little bit off or needs tweaking, if you have any thoughts after leaving here tonight and you want to share them with me, please feel free. I am kind of the pass-through to our consultant, so I will be able to take all of your thoughts and feedback and channel them along to tool design. And that is it. Thank you so much for doing this at nine o'clock on a Thursday night. You guys were great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for order of business is adjournment. Any objections?
Planning update?
Oh, planning update. I didn't, I skipped right on past it.
I'll keep it short. It is getting late here, so just a couple updates here. So we do fully expect to have an October meeting next month. We have a application that was submitted actually last month. It wasn't quite complete, so that should be moving forward next month. So I'll plan on having a meeting then. And the other item is we still have a vacancy on the planning commission. So if you have anyone in mind who might be a good fit for the commission, you know, certainly let them know and direct them to the city's website. You can direct them to the city staff, me, Andy. We can certainly help navigate them to get the application, you know, if they're interested in serving on this commission because we literally cannot get work, the business done without having a quorum. So it's very important to have, you know, a full planning commission. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Luke?
No.
Nope. I look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.
Thank you.